Thank you, it's nine o'clock on the twenty sixth of November and welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting for the twenty sixth of November. We'll do an attendance, I look around the room, I think we're all in attendance for councillor Fekner, but I did see him here earlier, so I'm sure he'll be joining us momentarily. And we'll move over straight to the acknowledgement of country, councillor Conzal.
Thank you. Ipswich City Council acknowledges the traditional owners and custodians of the land on which we meet on behalf of the citizens of Ipswich. With due respect to all this past and present and the future leaders of the Yagura, Jagura and Uggurupu people.
Thank you councillor Conzal, appreciate that. I'll just note that councillor Fekner has joined us. We can now move to the opening prayer, councillor Ireland.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Ipswich City. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of our community and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much councillor Ireland. We have no apologies or leave of absences. Thank you, we'll move to the condolences and I'd like to introduce a condolence motion for Rusty Thomas or David Rusty Thomas. That council convey its condolences on behalf of the citizens of Ipswich to the family of the late David Rusty Thomas. Rusty was the president of the Ipswich Show Society and served on the board of the Ipswich Events Corporation. In fifty-four years of service to major events, he entertained the crowds, championed our region and helped to make the annual show what it is today. Rusty passed unexpectedly at only age seventy-six and is survived by his wife Kay, son Michael, George Leonie and Sedony and grandchildren Blake, Georgie, Tyson and Jack. He will be remembered for his enormous generosity, for his sense of humour, craftsmanship and a can-do attitude. No job was too hard for Rusty, from manning the stalls to building and repairing amusement rides and advising on event planning and development. Really every city needs a Rusty and ours will feel the loss of an icon who approached his work with humility and always had the community in mind. May you rest in peace Rusty. Now that I've moved it, I call on those to vote on that motion. Those in favour? I see it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number six tributes, there are no tributes. Item seven presentations of petition, there are no petitions. Number eight is presentations and deputations. I'd like to present here, presentation to the council, a gift from His Excellency the Governor of Queensland who presented this gift to the council, the city on his recent visit on the twenty-eighth of October. I'll be presenting the framed insignia as well as a publication titled A Portrait of a Governor. Thank you very much CEO. We now move on to public participation. And there being none, we'll move on to item ten. Declarations of interest in the matters on the agenda and I know that we've had a number of these. So do we have, shall I read these out? It would be easier for all of each individual.
Um, whichever way we want to deal with it under the new regulation, you can note them if you wish.
We have declarations of interest.
If they've been made before, um, I think that's okay. If they're fresh declarations, they may need to be, may need to be made. So if they've been made before at a meeting, is that correct or explained?
Um, I did mine at a briefing.
Yes.
At a bit, no, you'd need to do that at the meeting, yes.
Councillor Ireland.
In accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I, Sheila Ireland, inform the meeting that at the council workshop briefing session on the twelfth of December twenty twenty, I advise CEO that I had a declarable conflict of interest. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is that my son was a former employee of Safco Proprietary Limited. He has not worked at Safco for at least two years.
Thank you councillor Ireland. Are there any other declarable conflicts of interest or other conflicts? Councillor Fekner?
Um, yes, thank you mayor. So in accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act of two thousand and nine, I councillor Andrew Fekner have a declarable conflict of interest in item number fourteen point two um, entitled Governance and Transparency Committee Report in item number two of that particular committee. Um, I note that it was mentioned at last week's Governance and Transparency Committee and was noted in the minutes. Um, but for completeness, um, I would wish to let the meeting know that I did inform the CEO in writing um, um, on the twelfth of the eleventh where this matter was first raised in a briefing session. Um, the nature of the declarable conflict of interest is my close relationship with the family that own Safco Vegetation Services Proprietary Limited. Um, I plan on dealing with that conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you councillor boss and the CEO. Thank you very much councillor Fekner. Before I move on to the next, I just had, sorry.
I do have another.
Did you have another? Yep. May I just put that on hold and I'll go back to councillor Ireland. My understanding, the advice I've had from the CEO is that we need to decide what to, whilst we made that decision during the briefing, that there was, that a conflict did not exist, we need to relook at that again.
Formally do it.
Formally do that. Um, so I guessing councillor Ireland would have to go through the same process you did during the briefing session?
I haven't got that in my papers. Do you want me to read out that?
You've made, effectively made the declaration, but you need to indicate you wish to stay in the meeting, I presume.
Leave it to the councillors to decide if I may participate in the meeting.
Right. In that case, I move that councillor Ireland participates and votes on item fourteen point two. Um, I am sure titled the governance, the grounds maintenance associated services because there is no personal financial benefit to the councillor or her family. And therefore a reasonable personal trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that motion? Thank you again councillor Conzal. Councillor Conzal? Is there any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, noting that councillor Ireland did not vote.
And just to be clear, that, that decision of the council stands if that matter was to be considered at a future meeting, the same matter. So, yeah, so essentially sets, sets the rules going forward in that space for councillor Ireland.
Thank you. I apologise councillor Fekner, you're obviously partway through disclosing, obviously you talked about your declarable conflict. Did you wish to disclose any other conflicts?
So, secondly, um, in accordance with section one fifty two of the Local Government Act of two thousand and nine, I councillor Andrew Fekner inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items, that's multiple.
Yes.
Fourteen point six entitled Ipswich Central redevelopment committee report and also sixteen point one notice of motion footpath dining. The nature of the conflict is my business interests in Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited and A1A Proprietary Limited located at the top of town in Ipswich and I plan to deal with this by leaving the meeting while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much councillor Fekner. And I think councillor John, you also had a declarable conflict of interest?
Um, in accordance with section one fifty EM of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Nicole Johnic inform the meeting that I have a prescribed conflict of interest in item number fifteen point eight titled sub-regional waste alliance, expression of interest for resource recovery and or waste disposal services. Um, I have previously notified the CEO in writing of this prescribed conflict of interest and the nature of the prescribed conflict is that I have family members employed um, within entity that is a, um, has contributed to the EOI.
Item fifteen point eight.
Item fifteen point eight.
Thank you. And how would you like to deal with that conflict councillor John?
It's prescribed.
Thank you very much.
To you mayor, um, we might just need to, um, have a look at the, the minutes on the board. Um, there was actually no, because it's a confidential attachment, there was no mention of the act, there's no mention in the publicly available papers of the company that Nikki refers to.
Councillor Johnic?
Uh, councillor Johnic refer, that refers to. So I'm just, I guess through you and to the CEO, I seek clarification as to whether that should be, um, public and on the minutes of this meeting.
You raise a very good question councillor.
Yeah, look, it's an extremely difficult situation because councillor Johnic's connections will be, have been identified in other locations. But, um, yes, in the public of available papers, you're correct. So what we will do is try and make sure that we're not identifying the company that is one of the many companies that have expressed an interest in this process.
May I suggest then that we remove that particular company's name and so she has to was employed by a respondent or a proponent from the EOI? So all those were in specific. And it also says declarable rather than prescribed. Okay, we're happy with that. Thank you very much councillor Johnic. Are there any other conflicts of interest? Yes councillor Madsen?
In accordance with section one hundred and fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Jacob Madsen inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item fourteen point six Ipswich Central redevelopment committee report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is that I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building is immediately adjacent to the Ipswich Central redevelopment. I also have another declarable conflict of interest for item thirteen point one, the late report for today, the designation of Nicholas Street Mall. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is the same. I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and this report, although I don't understand to a great detail what any benefits and costs that designation of mall on, possibly on one of our frontages would impose, I think it's best to declare that.
Um, if I could say councillor Madsen, one of the things that came up in the CBD redevelopment, because we received it sort of like that day or the night before, um, part of the reason why we did refer that decision to here was to get the, the input of the entire council, I guess.
Indeed, well, um.
Put that as a.
No, I, um, as a result of those two conflicts of interest, I, you know, I think it's in the best interests of everyone that I leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on for both of those items.
Okay, that's your, your call. Thank you.
Just to you mayor, I'd, I'd like to deal with a councillor Johnic's conflict. Was that left to the room to decide on? Just for clarification.
Well, it's a prescribed, so there's no, no, just. CEO?
Yeah, prescribed, um, conflict of interest, you must leave the room.
So she must leave.
Through you to the CEO, um, the nature of the conflict, um, and being associated with that particular company through a family member. Um, while important to mention, I don't believe, um, holds any material value in that the matter that we're discussing and voting on today does not award any work to a particular group. Um, and in fact, whether we just carry on with the EOI process where no works will be awarded to any particular company at today's meeting. So wouldn't, wouldn't likely preclude.
The issue is that once a prescribed conflict has been declared and that's not the decision of the council, the declaration is made by the council or once the prescribed conflict is made, is declared, then the councillor must leave the room and that matter is considered.
Thank you for clarification.
These are the new laws that have been.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
No, thank you councillor Fekner.
Just through the chair, so that I chose prescribed because that was the advice given to me in relation to my conflict, so. Just for clarification.
Thank you. I want to thank every one of you who've done this. I think it's obviously a big part of transparency and I really appreciate each one of the councillors that have um, been very open and transparent with their conflicts of interest. Thank you. We'll move on to item eleven, confirmation of minutes. May I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Doyle. I have a seconder. Thank you very much councillor Milligan. Thank you very much. So the recommendation is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty-sixth of October twenty twenty be confirmed. I'll open that up for any discussion. There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you very much. We move on to item eleven point two, confirmation of the minutes of the special meeting, that the minutes of the special meeting held on the fifth of November twenty twenty be confirmed. May I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Doyle. A seconder, thank you councillor Fekner, appreciate that. Any discussion on those minutes of the special meeting? There being no discussion, I'll then move that to a vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous. Thank you. Move on then to the mayoral minutes, which there is none. So move on to item thirteen, which is the business outstanding. Now I believe councillor Madsen, that's the one that you've decided to leave. Thank you. Item one point three, sorry thirteen point one is designation of Nicholas Street Mall. May I please have a mover for this? Thank you councillor Doyle. A seconder, thank you councillor Johnic. Thank you. This report relates to a recommendation from item four of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee in relation to the designator of the Nicholas Street Mall. Um, and the recommendation from that committee was that a report listing the pros and cons of the proposed option be considered at this ordinary council meeting today and that the council needs to consider one of the options in this supplementary report and move a motion to adopt that option. Would anyone like, may I have a, I don't have a mover. Would you like to speak to the relevant council officer on that? Yes, may I please ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern please? May I state your name and your title please?
Good morning mayor and councillor, Sean Madigan, general manager of coordination and performance.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr Madigan? Thank you.
Um, good morning Mr Madigan. I was just wondering if you can give us just, um, some practical examples of how we will enforce and regulate activities under option one in relation to, um, the, the roadways being Nicholas Street and, and Union Place.
Uh, in, in the event that it was designated only the footpaths of Nicholas and Union Place, uh, technically, um, people would be able to smoke in that area as it is a roadway, a designated mall. Um, that's under the current local laws that exist within council. So, um, that is the risk associated with that particular option. Um, the cons of that, um, oh sorry, the pros of that particular option are the fact that uh, it remains, you know, a vehicle access road and not a designated mall, which is somewhat incongruous. Doesn't create a significant conflict, um, so the options are all available. So, but you're exactly right, that if we did leave the road out, um, if someone was standing in. So but you're exactly right, that if we did leave the road out, um if someone was standing in the roadway and smoking a cigarette, uh it wouldn't be enforceable or regulated under the current local laws.
Thank you, so councillor Madigan, we will be extending the no smoking area and other provisions to where the county is.
That's correct.
Any other questions of Mr Madigan? No, thank you very much, Mr Madigan. I'll now put the matter to the floor for discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll move that we go to option one. Um and I'll just check with the mover and the seconder. Councillor, are you okay with option one being the preferred option?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Councillor Johnick?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Option being one being the preferred um opportunity, being the option in this recommendation. Do we have any discussion? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I know it's unanimous. Thank you. I'll now pause or we ask wait for councillor Madsen to rejoin us. Thank you, councillor Madsen.
Yeah, well, it's not room. It was locked off.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move back on to item twelve point one, uh which is the um the growth in infrastructure waste committee, the committee, that the growth in infrastructure and waste committee report of the twelfth of November be noted. The G O W committee has a delegated power, so we just ask for this report to be noted. May I please have a mover for that? Thank you, councillor Fekna. Seconder, thank you councillor Doyle. I now open it for any discussion. There being none, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. We'll move on now to item twelve point uh two, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee. And that recommendation, that council adopt the recommendations of the Governance and Transparency Committee Report of the nineteenth of November. And I'll hand over to councillor Madsen to see.
Uh thank you, ma'am. My recommendation would be for the exception of items two and six from the agenda, from um that recommendation, as they need to be dealt with on their own. Item two, because councillor Fekna has declared a conflict in which was to leave the room. And item six, because some councillors have indicated to me that they wish to discuss the matter further today.
Thank you. So that means you're looking to move item one?
One, three, four and five.
One, three, four and five. One, three, four and five. Would you like to speak to those before we, oh, I'll I'll move it first, sorry. Uh so you're moving one, three, four and five?
Yep.
Yep. May I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Fekna. Um councillor Madigan, do you wish to speak to any of those reports?
Not in any great detail. Brigger was applied last week. Um there's a couple of procurement matters which were dealt with. And if anything, our procurement branch seem to be doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on items one, three, four and five? There being none, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. We'll move to item um two of that particular one and wait for councillor Fekna to leave. Thank you. Item two of that matter was actually um three items in one. I believe that we will do that all three at once. But we're looking at the panel for the council approval, the preferred supply arrangement for the supply of grounds maintenance and associated services. And for a contract that was um, with all options are exercised, would actually end up being over eight million dollars spent on their services and to allow the C E O to do that. May I have a mover for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. May I have a seconder? Councillor Madsen, thank you. I'll open that up for discussion. Now, there was quite a bit of discussion at the committee meeting, so I'll then move on to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it was unanimous. I'll now wait for councillor Fekna to come back to the room. I note that councillor Fekna has come back to the room. Thank you very much. For item number six, um I'll move that one. Do I have a seconder for that particular item? Which is the transparency integrity have publication of council expenses. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern for item six, please? Thank you. Would you please let your name and your position, please?
Sonia. Sonia Cooper, General Manager of Corporate Services.
Thank you. I see Ms Cooper, this resolution is talking about two things. One is um um the current councillors reporting their expenses. And my question is on the the second part, which is on looking at former councillors um reporting on their expenses and and former directors. Um of the former councillors and the former directors, how many of those have agreed for their expenses to be published?
Uh I don't have those exact numbers to hand at present. I would say, though, that it is less than half a dozen now.
Okay.
It is in the minority of the responses that we have received that have consented.
Okay. Wonderful. When will.
Certainly confirm the number if if that's required.
Um when do you think we'll be able to publish how their expenses on the portal?
So what we're doing at the moment is is still following up those former councillors and former directors that have not responded to the letter that was signed and sent to them by the C E O, David Farmer. Uh as the report mentions, uh there are a number that have consented. Uh there are a number that have made it very clear that they don't provide their express consent. Uh and there are two that have sought further information that hasn't yet been acquitted. Uh some information provided, but further questions that we're just working to answer. Uh there are, though, um really the majority that have not responded to the letter from the C E O. So uh follow-up letters have been finalised and will be put to the C E O for his signature uh in the coming days. And we will then uh see what responses we get to those letters.
Mm-hmm.
Uh in the 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 earliest opportunity, after allowing, say, a period of a couple of weeks for any further response or questions to come forward, uh we will be writing to the Information Commissioner again. We've had multiple exchanges of letters with the Information Commissioner, but we will write again to provide an update on the consultation. The Information Commissioner has, as the report indicates, made it clear to us that they do expect council to have exhausted consultation with affected individuals uh prior to them, uh the Information Commissioner being considering herself in a position to make a decision on our application for a waiver uh from the application of the privacy principle. So I feel that after this follow-up letter has been sent, two weeks provided, we will um really be calling subject to the C E O's agreement on the Information Commissioner to make her decision on our application for waiver, given all of the efforts that we've made to consult with the affected individuals, the former councillors and former directors.
So those who have signed the privacy waiver, um when will their expenses be published? Or do we still have to go to the Information Commissioner?
Uh we could, ma'am, we could commence publishing, in fact, those uh former councillors and former directors that have consented. We could commence publishing that uh really effectively now.
Okay. Thank you.
So we we could do that. And uh to go back to your your question uh in terms of when, um so uh subject to all of those processes I just described, um we will be looking to begin that publication, certainly no later than the um you know, before the calendar year is out.
Thank you.
Um uh pending, of course, that um the Information Commissioner's response as to whether or not she will provide us with the the waiver. Uh if if that were to be the case, then that would provide us with the ability to publish far more information on the former councillors and former directors.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions on Ms Cooper? Thank you very much, Ms Cooper. I now open the floor for discussion.
I think the main thing I would like to point out that um this is the information that I was hoping that would be published on the Transparency Integrity Have on the first of July. Um we've obviously um encountered a few privacy or some other issues, which is a bit frustrating because we're just wanting to know how rate payers' money was spent. Um we are following the the due process and just letting people know that um I think would have been beneficial if we were able to publish it back on the first of July so we could move past it. Um by by it being dragged out, it is is um I think quite frustrating for the people of Ipswich. And um the sooner we get it done and the sooner we we move on, the better for our city, I think, as well.
I just to you, ma'am, I think that it is important that we do this the right way, though.
Yes, absolutely.
You pushing it through on the first of July um would have put the council at extreme risk, financial reputational risk. So I think that the way that Ms Cooper is dealing with this um is the right way. And I mean, um coming into office, I don't think any of us knew um how much of a web, you know, privacy can be um and any of the legal implications. They probably weren't considered when that date was given on the first of July. I think that there was a lot more to unpack from that. So um a slow burn's a good burn if everyone's um crossing their Ts and dotting their Is and doing everything the right way.
Yes, it's certainly not a criticism of council offices. Um we're obviously working with the um um Information Commissioner. Any other discussion points, councillor John?
Just one point. I I support the motion subject to one consideration. It's in relation to paragraph um A. And it's the words um or implied, um provided um their express or implied consent. Um it's difficult to conceive um i- in circumstances where people's um rights being considered, where 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 an implied consent uh might be given, um and and how it might be interpreted and who might interpret it, where interpret whether it i- is implied. Um without necessarily moving an amendment. I was wondering if you was a mover in the second we prepared to delete the words or implied. Um so I would just read, provided their express consent.
Okay. Just because we're dealing with the um, I might ask for um Ms Cooper to come back down to see if there was a reason for that exact wording or not. Ms Cooper, there's been raised about the whether we should change the wording of recommendation A, and it's mainly around the word implied. Do you mind outlining the wording of that recommendation, please?
Thank you, ma'am. So um that wording is there as that is the wording taken from the information privacy principle itself that refers to uh consent of affected individuals. So that's really why the wording is as it is.
Mm-hmm. And what would it mean if the word implied was removed? Would it impact our privacy waiver moving forward?
No, no, it wouldn't impact, well, no, it wouldn't impact our application for the waiver. I'm just thinking of the longevity of this decision. Um certainly, given we have taken the approach that we have and written to the current councillors, we um would not recommend to you that we publish current councillors who haven't consented expenses and remuneration. I'm just trying to think going forward with my crystal ball.
Yes.
Um I think suffice to say that, you know, you're here and now and and make the decision based on the current circumstances that may need to be revisited in the future with a a new council, I guess. I'm just trying to think ahead.
An example, an example I might comment is Brisbane City Council currently effectively does this. They have a section in their business paper called the checks, and they show the detailed uh expenditure information for all councillors and have done for decades. Um no councillor would can would have ever fulfilled a um a consent form. It's an implied consent because that's custom and practice. So that's an example where um implied consent is provided where it is custom and practiced and has been established. As opposed to here, where our custom and practice has not been doing that.
Yep. I'm not sure if the C I I wanted to make a a comment or not, and if so, I'll just, I'll. Or no, or?
No, it's.
Okay.
Sylvia, forgive me speaking.
I should know, I'll just, if you're asked, you see, um if we're going to ask a question, we'll we'll bring you here to the the lectern. Are there any other questions of Ms Cooper? No, thank you, Ms Cooper. Okay, thank you. I guess I'll ask the C I, do you think you have something to to add to this or? Or, I'll call the C I O.
Thank you, ma'am. Um Sylvia Swilling, Chief Information Officer. Um the only um additional comment that I could make is that implied consent is usually consent given under a standard collection uh information collection notice. So the O I C um defines implied consent as an organisation or agency doesn't actually need your express consent to handle your non-sensitive personal information. But they need to reasonably believe that they have your implied consent via a collection notice.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I start, please?
So just.
So that's not, that the the collection notice procedure, it doesn't relate to this matter?
Um if it is non-sensitive information, so the data has been classified as non-sensitive, that is open, then it would be deemed, uh if it was collected under a general uh collection notice, that you would have implied consent.
But that hasn't happened in this case.
As it pertains to councillor expenses, um there would be probably a combination of non-sensitive and sensitive information. And that's why both would have been added.
Ju- just to add to my comments, I think.
So any other questions of the C I? Thank you very much.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, ma'am.
Yes, councillor John.
Yeah, I ju- I just think it 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 leaves open widely about who who would interpret whether or not it's implied. Um can it be implied in circumstances where the express consent has been sought and uh not provided for whatever reason? Um I just think, because as the C E O said, this is the first occasion um where this matter has arisen and there's no custom and practice established, that we need to be clear that um because in this proposed uh uh resolution, it's it's not even clear who would interpret that uh whether or the the it's implied. What we've been seeking is the express consent, and I think it should be clear that that's what we're after.
Against the tally. Um so you asked, you were saying that Brisbane City Council use implied consent as well?
Well, that's because they've been doing it for a long period of time. So anybody who gets elected to Brisbane City Council now, essentially that information's published every month. But essentially, that's that happens and they don't, that they wouldn't be signing a consent form, they just do it. That's just the way the business is done.
Okay. Thank you. Um based on that, I'm, as as the mover, I'm not inclined to change the recommendation of that. I'll check with, no?
All right, well, I'll I'll move an amendment, um a variation that the words um three words be deleted from paragraph A, either there um um, oh, sorry, four words, either there and the words or implied be deleted. So so that it would read have provided their express consent. And the amendment, just to clarify. And the amendment, just to clarify that, to delete four words, either there and the words or implied be deleted.
I'll let Ms Lucrits complete that first. Did you wish to put that actual? So that way people can see it. Thank you. Is there anyone who will second councillor Tully's motion? Sorry, amendment? There being no seconded, that has not gone through, we'll revert back to the original, um, recommendation. Is there any other discussion on recommendations A and B? There being none, I'll put that motion to the floor. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And I look around and it's unanimous except for councillor Tully.
Well, could, just a point of order, could you please take my vote? Because, um, that could either be regarded as voting in the negative or...
I, oh, I'm about to ask if there would, yeah, um, those against, this councillor Tully? Thank you very much, the motion passed. We'll now move on to item number... Twelve point three, which is the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee.
Just a point of order, Mayor, fourteen point three?
Thank you, councillor Fitna. Yes. So, we're now moving on to item fourteen point three, not twelve point three. And that is the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sport Committee for the council, that the council adopt, adopt the recommendations of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee Report of the nineteenth of November twenty, uh, twenty. May I have a, uh?
I'll just, there's a slight variation I'd like to make before moving.
Yes.
I would like to adopt the recommendations of the Community Culture Arts and Sports, um, Committee Report, um, excluding item number one, entitled Update on the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council.
Thank you. May I have a second to that? Thank you, councillor Johnic. Thank you. Do you wish to speak to this?
Um, yeah, just a, just a brief update from last week's committee. Um, we have the pleasure of hearing from, um, lots of different community, um, organisations through our wonderful staff, um, in communities, um, just for the benefit of the councillors who weren't in attendance at committee. Uh, we discussed the Living in Ipswich pilot surveys and we kind of contrasted the inability to access those hard-to-reach people with the fact that we presented a strengthening community engagement report, um, which really does focus on how do we holistically look, um, to engage people in our community? Um, and I'll take it as read, but it's a wonderful report. And there was, um, lots of wonderful things happening at committee last week. And we got to talk about the launch of the Children, Young People and Families policy, but lots of us were in attendance at those events. Um, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'd just like to point out that at the committee meeting, I did ask for, um, if councillor would come back to me. Uh, the report on IAC, I think the work has been fantastic. Um, but that report that there does say, report in take one, um, as we know...
Just a point of order, Mayor, will we discuss, will we vote on the moving in batch and then discuss the item that we're not batching?
Good, good idea. Thank you very much, councillor Fitna. So, you're moving which items to be moved now in batch then?
Uh, two through five.
Two through the five? So, so councillor Fitna has moved that, uh, items two, three, four, five, uh, considered in batch. I'll just check with councillor Johnic, you are okay with that? Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? In that case, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Thank you. Then move on to item one, which is on IAC. May I have a mover for the IAC report? Thank you very much, councillor Fitna. And it, and a seconder? Thank you, councillor Johnic. I'll open it up for discussion.
I think that the council, the relevant council officer to speak to this might be worthwhile.
Okay. May I have the relevant council officer, Mr Nichols?
Thanks, Mr Nichols. Um, just revisiting, and this might touch on, um, the, the mayor's point that she was going to make earlier. Um, the only, um, the only, um, real point of contention at last week's committee was with regards to the particular iteration of the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council, as noted in the report. Um, the mayor did raise that, um, the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council, um, had been running for many years and she didn't wish to, um, exclude, um, previous incarnations of, um, IAC from the conversation moving forward. And I know that, um, we have had some conversations around this and I think that you've come up with some wonderful ideas that you might be able to share with us some more.
Love to hear them.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor and councillors. So, Cameron Nichols, Children and Youth Development Officer for Ipswich City Council. Um, yeah, in essence, based on the feedback provided in the meeting, Mayor Harding, we've had some conversations regarding the wording for the reports moving forward. Um, so we'll be working on a model more so on an annual report basis, which covers the progress of the group in that particular year. Um, but based on the, the comments and feedback regarding how we can, um, recognise the contributions of our previous, um, IAC groups, um, we're having some preliminary conversations at this point, um, regarding ways that we can potentially, um, celebrate and share some of those achievements and stories, almost a where are they now, if I may. I'm, I'm not necessarily one with words, that's why we have media and marketing. Um, but that would be one angle we could take as well. And also scoping, um, what we can be doing in regards to an alumni network. So, how we can continue to, um, build, um, you know, those connections with our past IAC members.
Thank you, Mr Nichols. That sounds fantastic. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr Nichols. That's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fitna, for following up on that. I really appreciate that. I think it's important to recognise, well, know who one of the alumni will be. Um, but, um, it's important to recognise the, the hard work that the IAC have done over the years. I know councillor Island, you sort of drove that for many years as well. Okay. Any other discussion on that particular item? In that case, I'll put that matter to the vote. Those, those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Dora, you raise, thank you. Unanimous? Thank you. Now moving on to item, um, fourteen point four, which is the, um, Economic and Industry Development Committee. So, the recommendation is that council adopt the recommendation of the Economic Industry Development Committee of the nineteenth of November twenty twenty. And I'll hand over to the, the chair to see if she would like to move.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, um, would like to just move item three and pull out item number one and two, um, for significance and because of other councillors' requests to discuss further.
So, you're moving which items this time?
Uh, three.
Just three?
Yep.
Wonderful.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, councillor Fitna. Um, I'll leave it open for discussion. There being no, just...
Just, so, item three is significant as well. I'm, I'm not saying that it's not, um, the food truck friendly, uh, councillor initiative, which fits, um, perfectly within our small business friendly council initiative as well. So, um, that is definitely a highlight.
May I, since there's only three recommendations, so I suggest that we don't batch them, go through one by one. Is that okay with?
That's fine.
Is it okay with you, councillor Johnic and councillor Fitna?
Um, if councillor Johnic is fine with that, then I am.
Okay, thank you. We'll do each one one by one. So, number one is the Willow Bank Ebenezer Intermodal, Terminal, um, Social Economic Benefits and Impacts Report. May I have a mover for those three recommendations? Thank you, councillor Johnic. And a seconder? Thank you, councillor. And they'll open it up for discussion.
So, I just wanted to, um, pull that out to highlight the significance of the intermodal. Um, because the, um, funding coming down from federal government, um, for the, um, business case development, um, is happening quite, um, soon. So, I wanted to highlight the significance of that, basically. Um, yeah.
Did you wish to speak to the relevant council officer about that?
Yes, please.
May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the stand, please, or the lectern? Can you please say your name and your position, please?
Uh, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Dan Heenan, Coordinator, Major Projects and Advocacy in the Office of Economic Development.
So, Dan, I think that you can highlight all the good stuff, all the pros and cons in relation to this project a bit better than I can. So, you've got the floor.
Okay, great. Um, so this was a, a, a report that was focused on, I suppose, the economic activities of, um, of council, the state and the federal government in relation to, uh, the Ebenezer sort of regional industrial area. Um, and, and more specifically, it was a report that focused on the outcomes of the council procured, uh, Ebenezer Intermodal Economic and Social Benefits and Impact Study, uh, which was undertaken by CDM Smith. Um, the Ebenezer Intermodal Terminal is a declared regionally significant project for council. Um, and so the study really enabled council to get a better understanding for, um, the potential opportunities and issues associated with this potential piece of infrastructure. Um, so the benefits and impacts are outlined in the report, but there are, the, the key conclusions are that, um, there are significant and long-term benefits associated with this piece of infrastructure economically. Um, there are some impacts, though, that have also been flagged in the report also. Um, however, um, it's noted in the report that a lot of the impacts that have been flagged relates to the transformation of what is essentially a rural area into an industrial area. So, the impacts that are discussed are often around, you know, noise from traffic, air quality, those sorts of things, which are in the long term likely to occur regardless. Um, so what we've, what we've proposed in this report is to conduct, given the, the range of issues associated with the potential development of six thousand hectares of industrial area, um, we've proposed to take forward a series of workshops with Mayor and Council on, um, working through all of those issues so that we can, ahead of development occurring, collectively understand them and be informed about them before decisions are needed to be made. Um, uh, with respect to the intermodal itself, um, in February this year, the federal and state government announced ten million dollars in funding towards the intermodal business case. Um, and from recent discussions with TMR, it's understood that possibly this year procurement for that will, will commence. Um, if not at the very latest, it'll be early, very early in the new year. Um, so, and council, uh, sorry, and it's expected to take between twelve to eighteen months to complete. So, they're hoping to have it wrapped up by December twenty-two at this point. Um, and probably just the last thing to note that there'll be a lot of community consultation involved and council will also be invited to participate in working groups, um, uh, uh, also, so that we can be involved in that. Um, uh, in, in terms of, did you want me to talk to the benefits more specifically? Yeah?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um...
I think people will be interested in what potential jobs could be out here and the number and the, and the amount of investment we're trying to track down here.
So, the key highlights, I guess, of the report are, um, so, when, obviously at this point in time, it's really early in the process, the business case hasn't been finalised. So, the economic assessment that was undertaken, um, assumed three different scenarios in terms of the amount of, um, uh, I suppose, containers that are essentially moved through facility. So, there was a low option, a medium option and a high option. Um, and so there's, there's quite a significant range of potential, uh, outcomes, I suppose, benefits that come with that. So, um, the total economic, uh, I suppose, output is as estimated as potentially three hundred million to six hundred million, and that's at year five, which has a total household income impact of between seventy-five million and a hundred and fifty million, a hundred and forty-seven million. Uh, a total employment impact of eight hundred and forty-one FTEs to, just lost it, one thousand six hundred and sixty-one FTEs. Um, and total value added impacts, uh, are a hundred and fifty-five to three hundred million. So, and what that's, what that's about is looking at that range relative to a base case scenario of kind of where we are today for, of no intermodal terminal occurring. Um, and it's probably also worth, um, noting that that's not just the impacts directly of the intermodal terminal. It's also then the economic activity that then would occur around that as well. So, through, you know, industrial operators wanting to locate in close proximity, local businesses benefiting from that piece of infrastructure. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Heenan. I guess, um, why I wanted it highlighted is because our city is growing so fast and we need that, jobs to grow, um, as well. Sorry, it was significantly raised GDP and that caught my attention.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Island, you had a question?
Excuse me, um, Champion's Way is not going to cope with this amount of traffic. And I think that, um, you're saying it's great benefit, but we need infrastructure before you fix this. A thousand full-time employees out there, that's a thousand more vehicles up to Champion's Way. Um, would the state and federal government need to improve their infrastructure before they bring all of this, um, traffic out there? It was a, um...
So, councillor Island, is it a question or are you making a statement?
If we're supporting this and saying, hey, this is great, it's great for the city, where in the report does it talk about the problems that it's also going to raise and how, um, the state and federal government need to throw money at it?
Yeah, so it does talk about, um, in, in the impact, in the social and economic impacts section, it does discuss the potential impact to council through having to invest more money in local roads. Um, but it, it's going to be a really important consideration for the detailed business case going forward um, of what transport infrastructure is going to be required in association with this. And we will be involved in the development of the business case as it goes forward. So, right now, we don't know the answer to that question, but it, I agree with you. It will, the, the amount of infrastructure required will be substantial. Um, but from discussions I've had with the, uh, the inland rail team and with T, TMR, I think the expectation is that that infrastructure will have to follow, um, this facility.
To follow, it needs to be in the forehand.
I agree, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Heenan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, through the me, uh, Mr Heenan, I just would like to clarify, uh, with respect to item A. The recommendation you referred to the study before is the Ebenezer Intermodal Terminal Social Economic Benefits Impact Study. And, uh, in the recommendation there, it's, has Willow Bank Intermodal Terminal Social Economic Benefits Impact Study. Uh, part C refers to the Ebenezer Regional Industrial Area and it is commonly referred to, uh, colloquially as the Ebenezer Intermodal. Can I please confirm what it is?
Um, officially, the, it, it's, um, it's Willow Bank. Um, so I have to refer to it as that going forward. Ebenezer Regional Industrial Area, though, is a, um, part of the council's planning scheme and it's a, um, uh, yeah, a designated future industrial area. So, that's, that's slightly different.
So, the title of the study is as?
It is, the Willow Bank Intermodal Social and Economic Impacts and Benefits Study. Apologies for that.
Just through you, Mayor, um, and to councillor Island's point, I think that, um, uh, you know, the speed with which this is happening i- is obviously, um, concerning in terms of who's putting up the money. And we're very aware of council's financial position and the ability to deliver infrastructure like that. But I think that, um, and we could probably, um, take your advice on this, um, would we be comfortable in saying what's the business cases developed? um then state and federal money will begin to certainly flow in into alleviating some of those financial pressures of delivering the infrastructure?
Look, I, I, yes, is probably the short answer. I mean, I think we've got to remember though, at this point, it's not a certainty to come to Ipswich either. So part of the business case, they will look at Romualton, they will look at Toowoomba, they will look at, I mean, it'll be for the business case to actually determine the potentially suitable locations for this infrastructure, um and that'll be the early stages of that business case. Um. It's understood that Willow Bank um is in scope for that discussion, but yeah, it's, it's really early in the process. So whilst the the business case, you know, theoretically will be done by the end of twenty twenty-two, um at this point, there's a range of outcomes that could occur.
Through you, Mayor, so councils, uh other local government areas who are potentially more flush with cash to invest in their infrastructure um might um appear to be a better um option for this particular project?
I don't think so. I mean, it's, in this case, you know, the the first step of a business case process is about defining the problem. Um and then you go forward with developing options to solve that problem and um then progressing a detailed business case for a design. So um there will be a range of factors, I suppose, in in the early stage of of the business case that will point to certain locations being more suitable for this. And obviously, there are a lot of comparative benefits that come with Ipswich and the Ebenezer area more generally. And I expect they will come to the fore. Um uh but we've got to let that business case process play out. So for us, what we're doing is trying to understand the potential opportunity here so that we can decide collectively, um is this something we want to engage with, is it something we want to advocate for, city? Um and, you know, and and we take that forward on that basis or not. Um but that, that's really where we're at in terms of the process. We brought it to council um because there's a real opportunity for us to get ahead of this. And I feel like this piece of infrastructure is going to be the thing that kind of kicks off the whole of that Ebenezer area.
Thank you, Miss Heenan.
Sure.
Queensland's fastest-growing region certainly needs the job opportunities.
Any other questions, Mr. Heenan? No, thank you very much. Enough yet for discussion, I I just look at the um report that came to us last week on page sixteen of two thirty, two hundred and thirty. And it does state that council did say under risk management was that this includes council identifying a pathway to securing associated infrastructure investment, um including required infrastructure for industrial land activation and upgrades to the Yamanto Ebenezer Creek section of the Cunningham Highway, including the Ambly interchange. Anything further determined by council as part of future workshops. So I think that encompasses as well.
Very nervous here because um we know quite well that roads in particular don't get built before the traffic hits them. But we wait for the traffic jams and everything else, and then they may do it. So, but thank you all. I'll wait and see.
Yeah. I think we can agree, it's there, Councilor. Any other discussion? Now I'll put the matter to the vote, that report be noted, that's in favour, it's unanimous. Thank you, Council Johnick, for highlighting that opportunity to this meeting. Now move on to the next item on that particular, which is item two. Which is on the pilot facade improvement program. Did you have something you wish to move, Council Johnick, for that? Would you like to?
So the recommendations, but if I could um get Mr. Heenan down again, sorry.
So can I just, would you like to move, move that?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yep. And a second, uh, with Council Doyle, thank you. And I believe that we're asking Mr. Heenan to come back down.
No.
No? No, it won't be, sorry. You can say your name and your title, please.
Erin Marchant, Project Manager for Ipswich Central.
Hi, Ms. Marchant. So I just wanted to highlight the significance of this pilot um program and how successfully it was taken up by our um small businesses in the region. Um so is this um successful, um have you seen the success in other pilot programs before?
This is the first pilot program I've been involved with with Ipswich City Council. Um the successes so far is we have seen a really good collaboration with other businesses in the area, which was a small pilot area, basically top of town in Ipswich Central Core. We've also seen some um uh applications dedicated to the heritage in that area, which is really great to see. And then also with this program, we had a big emphasis on local business, so using those local contractors to improve the pilot, improve the facades.
Yeah, wonderful.
So ju- thus far, yes, I would say it's very successful and we were oversubscribed for this program.
Yeah, wonderful.
Just through the mayor, do we have plans on um and before and afters? I think that that's an important part of the process that we need to go through so that we can celebrate the the success of these businesses and kind of, once the, once the works are finished, um council should probably look to highlight those works done and um and create a little bit of a walk. It's just a, it's just a small area. And I think that if we highlight it through our media channels, then um, you know, it could really improve the way that we're looking at our C B D and a perfect opportunity piggybacking um on the wonderful Nicholas Street Precinct project as well.
We are working um with the marketing team and we have organised for before photos to be taken. And then once obviously the works are all complete, we have after photos. We do want to highlight the excellent work that is going to be achieved through this program because we are very passionate about the the um applications and the work that the businesses have put in to actually get to this point. So we do really want to promote that through our social media and would really um uh, I guess, appreciate the support of all of you.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Any other questions, Ms. Marchant? Thank you. Open up for discussion. Yes, Councilor?
Just um one comment, um just through my discussions with various local businesses and and some of which didn't participate in the facade improvement uh program. Um they are absolutely delighted by the transformation underway within our C B D and um are highly motivated um to make improvements um to their businesses and and shop fronts off the back of of this program. And and that's what it was all about, motivating um, you know, property owners a- around council-owned buildings um to take steps to improve the the overall look of the C B D. So I'm delighted and think it's a great initiative by council, but um our local businesses need to be commended as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Fickner?
Yeah, just uh on on the back of Councilor Doyle's comments and on and probably reiterating what I said at last week's committee, um the business owners are putting up their own money. This, this is, this is a, this is a match funding agreement, uh fifty-fifty. So uh we've got to commend those business owners who are taking a chance in what are pretty uncertain economic um times and in in a particularly difficult environment to be putting up their own money to improve the look of our beautiful C B D. Um we, we need to look to them and say thank you for being leaders um and improving our wonderful city.
I agree, Council Fickner. I note that um in this particular um, that the pilot program originally had a hundred thousand dollars committed to it. Um we're actually extending this to be a hundred and thirty-six, or nearly a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. We've actually rejigged the budget to put some more money towards it due to the success and the interest um in this particular program. So I think that's, that's, we eagerly wait, we eagerly wait for the uh the result. If there's no other discussion, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous. Thank you. Move on to the third item of that particular committee, which is that council determine that council should be a food truck friendly council and endorse uh the work required to streamline the council process to make it easier for food trucks to operate. Do we have a mover for that, Council Johnick? Do I have a, a second, or why? Oh, to Council Doyle. Thank you. Any discussion on this particular one? Being shy of it, Council Mattson?
No, I've spoke, I'll, I'll speak to it then. I believe I've spoken verbatim on this matter and how I think it's a good, good direction. Um if anything, I'd just endorse the council officers that have worked on it so far and will continue to work on it. Uh Ms. Mattson and um Mr. Breeden are pretty awesome individuals.
Thank you, Council Mattson. Any other discussion?
Yes, just one comment through the mayor. Um I know each um with regard to the C B D redevelopment and the program of activities and events coming up, um including with food trucks, there is a really good, healthy um food truck um business community already within Ipswich and and we've achieved a really good balance down there for these events um of of local food trucks as well as some um from other areas, but um definitely food trucks um have a place going forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just in, just in addition to that, um I think that um council's creating a real opportunity here. Um Councilor Doyle notes that the Nicholas Street Precinct uh will be opening and open for food trucks. So I think this is a great opportunity for any entrepreneurs who are looking to test their food ideas uh through a food truck. Um not only are we, you know, trying to improve the and streamline the processes for getting a licence to operate a food truck, we've also got a wonderful new venue in the middle of our city that they can then go and showcase um their ideas and and their business model as well.
Thank you, Council Fickner. If, if there's no other discussion, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll move a motion for us to take a twenty-minute break, if that's okay. So it's ten past eleven. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. We'll be back here at ten thirty. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll move a motion for us to take a twenty minute break. If that's okay, so it's ten past eleven. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Then we'll be back here at ten thirty. Thank you very much. 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 So move on to that item one of that committee, which is that the policy title Sustainability Policy as you said in touch one be adopted. May I have a mover for that please? That's it councillor Milligan. And a seconder councillor Doyle, thank you. I want to open up for discussion or questions.
Thank you ma'am. Any other councillors who agree, so I have no questions for council officer. I'd just like to make note with respect to the development of this policy, that extensive community consultation, community and other consultation was undertaken. That it was both internally and externally and that was integral in developing a meaningful policy that results in enhancing council's capability. That's detailed in the committee minutes. Specifically, the external consultation reached over two hun- in excess of two hundred external participants, conducted by a number of means. So in developing, moving forward and developing this, that it addresses the policy gap for the sustainability work and that the sustainability policy with that extensive consultation was conducted to inform and shape that policy. So just so the community is aware that there was a reasoning why, particularly through one of the platforms was Shaggy Ribs, which I believe had a very good response to it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that point? No, in that case I'll put that item number one. To the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Unanimous? I'll then go to item number two of the Environment Sustainability Committee, which is the Waterway Recovery Capital Expenditure Sub programmes. There was A and B in that motion. Do we have a mover for that? Thank you very much councillor Milligan. And a seconder, thank you councillor Feckner. Open up for discussion.
Excuse me, I again won't be calling on a council officer to fair any question unless any other councillor wishes to. But I just did want to point out, on the evening of the committee meeting last week, I attended the Breman Catchment Association at the Environment Centre at Queens Park and that was in my role as committee chair. And it was pointed out very clearly to me that they are very encouraged by the work that is being undertaken as detailed in the in the attached report. In particularly, the work conducted at Ironpot Creek. One member in particular was extremely pleased and asked me to express on their behalf thanks to council for the very good work that is undertaken. So I thought, I believe that this forum, a meeting here in this place is the best place to express that on behalf of the community to council and to thank the officers of that branch and department for the good work that they have undertaken.
Thank you. I think they're listening on live stream next door. Thank you. Any other discussion councillor Feckner?
Just through you ma'am, and for the benefit of the committee, councillor Mattson and I are proud members of the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust. And we just met this week. We had shared with them previously and council officers certainly have been in communications with the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust around this particular prioritisation, so that we can make sure that we find synergies between the work that the trust does and the work that council does to make sure that we maximise the improvement of our waterways moving forward. So I think that it's important for us to note in this room that it's not just council making a commitment, but external parties that are committed to making sure that we maximise the benefit that we get from the works that we do on our waterways. And going one step further, the Rivers Improvement Trust have some exciting ideas about incorporating other groups into the mix in terms of how do we prioritise as a collective rather than council's priorities versus the priorities of other groups versus the priorities of the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust. So, you know, these priorities set out and that will be included in the capital works programme year on year. Will help focus the work that many organisations across our waterways do to improve environmental outcomes.
Thank you councillor Feckner. Any other discussion? Right, thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Move on to item three of the Environment Sustainability Committee, which is the Notice of Motion of Disaster Management Policy. Now councillor Milligan, do we should make an amendment to that before we make an alteration to that?
Through you. I would like to move that recommendation B be amended to include the following words at the beginning of that recommendation, being that as part of undertaking recommendation A, the disaster management policy be amended to change the review term from two years to every year immediately following. from two years to every year, immediately following the traditional severe weather season.
So I'm just trying to read what the difference is.
Sorry?
There was no suggestion of amendment to change the review term. Yes, thank you, the stating now. Okay, I understand, so you're saying rather than doing two discrete activities, you're suggesting that they're at the same time?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
That is the intent.
Okay, thank you. So you'd like to move that?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
Is the intention of councillor Milligan to move A, C and the amended B all at once?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
So, so councillor Milligan wants to move A and the, and the adjusted B and C?
And I'm happy to say that.
As amended.
And a seconder, Councillor Fekner? Thank you very much. Open up for discussion.
Mayor, through you, the, the reasoning for that is, as you described, the onflow, so rather than make it two distinct separate actions contained in, in one, and that the, that item B follows consequentially from the actions of item A.
Sounds very efficient. Any other discussion? Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We're now, we move on to the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report, fourteen point six. Thank you, I hope that councillor Madsen has left and councillor Fekner is in the process. Thank you, note the recommendation for this report for the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee is that the council adopt the recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee report on the night from the nineteenth of November. And I'll just double check with the, the chair of that committee, you wish to move that in batch or individually?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I propose that we move items one to seven in, in batch, except for item number six, which I propose that we deal with separately.
So one through to five, and then seven?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for one through to five? Thank you, councillor Conselman. Of that for discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. We'll go on to item number six of that particular committee, which is the establishment of the Safe City Advisory Group. And I see that there's two recommendations there. That is that council endorse the creation of the Safe City Advisory Group and that council determine the membership of the Safe City Advisory Group. We've got a look at scheduling of who's going to be on that. Would you like to make a, a move, a move of recommendation?
Thank you, Mayor. At, at this stage, I've received feedback from councillors.
So may I ask, are you moving this?
Oh, sorry, yes.
And a seconder? Thank you, councillor Conselman. Thank you now.
Sorry, was that item A?
I, I did it as A and B, was that what you were doing? I now I put it up to councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. In relation to item B, that the advisory group be selected at this meeting, I can say at this time, I've received confirmation from councillors Conselman, Milligan, Madsen and Fekner, that they would each like to be a member of the group, along with myself. So that, that is five in total. I think the original recommendation was for three to four councillors.
But we could move to?
But I see no reason why.
Okay, so may I suggest, Deputy Mayor, that you remove to amend item B? That the members be yourself, councillor Conselman, councillor Milligan, councillor Madsen, councillor Fekner? Are you, do you support that, councillor Conselman?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the new recommendation? I'll open that for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a comment that this is an important piece of work that we as councillors need to do, highlighted by recent discussions and, and meetings around logistics and practicalities of the, the opening of stage two of, of the Nicola Street redevelopment. So it's timely that we, we formulate this group and start making some decisions and engage with appropriate people within our community.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion? Like, can I put the, that motion to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. I see that's unanimous, it's passed. Thank you, I'll just wait until councillor Fekner and councillor Madsen come back to the room. In which case we'll go on to item number fifteen. Well now move on to, we've got item fifteen as nine officer reports from the council. Item number one, the first one is fifteen point one, consideration of council advisors and amendment of the council expenses reimbursement and administrative support and related policies. And there are four in here, I'd like to deal with them individually, if that's okay with the. So the item A was that council not appoint any councillor or advisors. Under the changes to the Act, the mayor of Ipswich City Council is, could ask to have three advisors appointed. My preference not to, so I move that we do not appoint any councillor or advisors. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Yes, councillor Madsen?
I'd just be interested if you could explain why you prefer not to?
Why prefer not to?
Yeah.
I think it was probably the, the Act was written, I think, last year, and it went through Parliament, I think it was meant to go through Parliament earlier this year, and it came through recently. I think the point is that for, for them to be a political advisor, I don't wish to have any political advisors. I know they do have that in Brisbane City Council, but I think it's appropriate here for Ipswich City Council, so my preference is, is not to, to utilise that. I think it would make the council operate smoother. Thank you. Any other discussion? In that case, I put the ballot to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. I'm now going to item B of fifteen point one, that the revised policy titled council expenses reimbursement and administrative support policy as detailed in attachment one be adopted. I'll move that motion. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Conselman. I'll open it up for discussion. Thank you, councillor Tully.
Could the relevant officer, I've got some questions about the formatting of this, I just think.
Yeah, sure.
If we could get some clarification, please.
No, it's for the relevant council office, I think Mr Wilson's coming down. Please state your name and your position, please.
Morning, Mayor. Wade Wilson, manager of executive services.
Perhaps if I just, just a couple of issues, this is on paragraph twelve, legal and insurance cover.
Yes.
There's sections highlighted in red, these new sections are ruled out in red, which are proposed to be deleted. So this question I've got is in the second paragraph, I'll just wait for it to come up.
I think it's page ninety-three.
I'm just waiting for it to come up on the screen.
It'll be eleven of twelve on that.
Oh, it's page ninety-three on our agenda.
Yeah.
Yes. In this, in the, in the start of it, the second paragraph, it says, excepting inappropriate conduct matters, which means that the whole of that paragraph doesn't apply to that. But then if you go down to paragraph Roman numeral I, comes back to talking about inappropriate conduct matters. Unless I'm misinterpreting it, I think there's an inconsistency between the opening words of that and the, and the Roman numeral one.
As I understand it, councillor, the intent for these changes was that there was some, originally some inconsistencies between the model investigation policy set by the state, our expenses and reimbursement policy and the applicable insurance policy that council holds.
Right.
Advice was sought to determine the correct wording and how we could reconcile that. And the wording was used as is outlined here. As I understand it, the intent was to follow the model policy set by the state where coverage would not be provided for inappropriate conduct matters.
Now, I understand that, but the point I'm making is that the introductory words in the second paragraph create an exception to inappropriate conduct matters. And then it goes on to refer to inappropriate conduct matters as being the subject matter of, of the substance of the proposed amendment. It, it, they're quite inconsistent.
My understanding, my interpretation of that, and I did not write this as this is related to the insurance policy, is that it's around, that it allows council to recover the deductible if they do make a claim. Because as I understand it, under the insurance policy, the relationship is between the insured and the insurer, and if, if a councillor wishes to make a claim, they can. This just allows council to recover the deductible in that scenario.
Now, I understand that, I'm, I'm just talking about the words, the opening words of the second paragraph make an exception to, to the provisions which follow. So if we're saying that, that it's excepting inappropriate conduct matters, it's not consistent then, then to refer to the inappropriate conduct matters, because we've already excluded it, by, by virtue of those opening words in the second paragraph.
Point, point taken, and happy to, obviously, it's up to the council to make any change or recommendation as required.
Okay. Now, the next, next thing is in, if we go down further in relation to the two deleted paragraphs, is my interpretation correct that the current insurance for councillors in relation to, for example, performing their civic functions or role as a councillor, undertaking councillor business, or public liability insurance, professional indemnity insurance, council and offices insurance, personal accident insurance will disappear?
No, not at all. As I understand, that the changes to this clause essentially points the level of coverage to the applicable insurance policy, rather than outlining it in this policy.
So where does it say that now? I, I'd be quite concerned that, that by deleting specific reference to cover, for example, public liability insurance, personal accident, professional indemnity insurance are deleted, we'd need to have something very clear as to, as to where that's now covered.
My understanding is the opening paragraph is intended to cover that, where it outlines that council will impay, council will rather.
Sorry.
Pay the deductible on all insurance claims made in accordance with any policy of insurance.
So why would we delete those last two paragraphs?
It's, I understand it's to prevent any conflict between the applicable insurance cover.
Would the question be is what does the current insurance cover cover?
Well, yes.
Well, through the mayor, I'm not sure if councillors recall, I actually requested this information within the first two weeks of joining council, and I did.
I do recall that.
I, I, I forwarded that information on to everyone, including details of the relevant policy, so should all be abreast of that.
Yeah, but, but the point I'm making is, is that there's some specificity in relation to those last two paragraphs. We, we don't want a situation saying you voted to, to take away professional indemnity insurance as well.
Through the mayor, I, I understand councillor Tully's point, but I, I have a difference of opinion with regard to interpretation. I don't see how that first sentence excludes, or could potentially, they could argue to exclude, you know, public liability insurance, those specific examples. I guess you're thinking about it in the context of what they, they used to be. But, but I, I see that, that opening sentence is quite broad. Council will pay the excess on all insurance claims, it's not a defined term, made in accordance with any policy of insurance. Again, it's not specifically referring to, to a policy. I, I agree with your amendment to, to the second paragraph, deletion of the words except inappropriate conduct matters, I think that, that is appropriate, but I don't share the concerns around the first sentence. You know, they're not, there's no defined term.
I didn't have concerns about the first sentence, it was in relation to the deletion of the other paragraph.
Well, okay, sorry, I think the first sentence is broad enough.
My view is that the first sentence refers to the payment of the deductibles, and the last two paragraphs intended to be deleted, you know, indicate clearly what councillor, council will generally cover.
May I ask then, Mr Wilson, does our current insurance policy cover for public liability insurance, professional indemnity insurance, council and offices insurance, personal accident and international domestic travel insurance?
The insurance coverage is not an area that I specialise in, but my understanding is yes, it does definitely cover all of those items.
Through the mayor.
So, so councillor Fekner's had his hand up for some.
Through the mayor, and a question for Mr Wilson. This is, I see this as a stylistic decision to clean up the policy and, and the way that we present policy in council moving forward, rather than listing, it actually points to where you, you can find it in other policies, so that moving forward, if, if the insurance policy were to change, or cover were to change, for instance, not expecting that it will, that we wouldn't then have to go and amend multiple policies, rather the one that's being pointed to specifically here. Was that the intention of?
I, I understand that was the intention when that was drafted, yes.
Through, through the mayor, sorry, perhaps if I can propose then an amendment to the, to the first line, council will pay the excess deductible on all insurance claims made in accordance with any policy of insurance, comma, including but not limited to. And then we specifically list.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that.
Happy with that?
Okay. Will I repeat that for Miss Lucas? So I think we've.
So that would be including not, but not limited to?
Those various items that have been.
Yeah, public liability insurance, professional indemnity insurance.
Paragraph twelve?
Assuming Mr Wilson is happy with that.
So at the end of the first sentence of paragraph twelve, adding that?
A- a- adding the items specified in the two deleted par- proposed deleted.
From public liability through to travel insurance.
Could we also then include in that amendment if, if councillor Doyle is happy to take out those opening words of paragraph two, except inappropriate, in inappropriate conduct matters?
So I think councillor Tully's proposing that we take out those first five words of the second sentence?
Look, it is, is my view from, I guess, a, a legal interpretation point of view that, that we could remove those words. I am just conscious, perhaps Mr Wilson, you know, whilst councillor Tully and I are both lawyers, we're here in our capacity as councillors, and potentially Mr Wilson needs to take it back to the lawyers to have a look at, I'm just.
Yes, that this was drafted by our solicitors in consultation with our risk and insurance section.
Okay, so we'll propose that amendment to delete those words, but. Okay, so we'll propose that amendment to delete those words, but, but noting that obviously both amendments we've proposed will be subject to legal.
May I just question the CEO?
I just wanted to clarify with Mr Wilson, the specific reference to the inappropriate conduct matters, I think was the concept that, that there was sort of a, a concern that, that we would be, we wouldn't be supporting legal support for councillors in, in inappropriate conduct matters, which are not a formal court of, of law and are actually handled within the council, I think, is that the general philosophy behind that?
That is the core intent of this change, yes.
Whereas, and, and perhaps the English isn't as good as it could be, that's, that's the intention.
Yeah.
Whereas if you, if you go to QCAT, you go through the other OIA process or you're in another, in a formal court of law, then, then council would by default cover your, your excess and your cost via your insurance. But the concept was that inappropriate conduct matters, that, that the, the concept of support, legal support for the council wasn't necessarily endorsed. That hasn't been expressed as clearly as it should be.
Well, I probably have issues with that as well.
That is the intention and it was based on ensuring consistency with the model investigations policy as set by the state.
Okay.
Could I, could I suggest that perhaps instead of excepting inappropriate conduct matters, it read in relation to inappropriate conduct matters? Because then that would be consistent with Roman numeral I paragraph.
And, and I think councillor Tully, I do note that with the act and the, the office of the independent assessor, that there is a mechanism, if the council wished to, to recoup some costs, if, if it is deemed to, if someone has had inappropriate conduct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, um.
Oh, I'm not, yeah, I'm not referring to that, I'm just.
I am, I am considering if, if it's just some legal support, while someone is defending that.
Mayor, yeah, so, so my initial interpretation and thinking was that, I, I guess the reference to inappropriate conduct, I think we're talking about potentially multiple definitions or provisions there, so I agree with the CEO that I think wording's probably not as clear as it could be, so just need to reconsider that.
Could I perhaps suggest that we adopt the, this, this part of the report with, with that exception, and then that could then be considered at our next meeting to get the correct word?
I was going to suggest that if the council's happy with the balance, I think there's some things in here that you do want to adopt.
I do, I do wish to adopt, yes.
And so you could adopt it with item twelve to be reconsidered at the, and we will put additional information up at the December order.
Well, I'll move that the, what's been.
So I'll, I'll put the fact that obviously myself, I moved this in and councillor Kuncelmann.
Well, I'll move an amendment to, to, to add the words with the exception of item twelve to be considered separately at the December ten meeting.
And if we could make sure that, because this is not a policy that we've been briefed on as well, so. Okay, I'm, I'm happy with that amendment, councillor Kuncelmann, are you happy with that amendment?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open this up for discussion, and I'll open up, we're talking about probably the major changes to this, some changes to the staffing of the office of the mayor, but also for council support. And I just want to say that obviously we've been here now for seven and a half months, and I think I could speak on behalf of the elected representatives, that we've had some terrific support from council officers and the ELT in council, and we're very grateful for the support over the last seven and a half months. The policy states that the councillors, the eight councillors get six support staff. When we started, I think on the fourteenth of April, there was two support staff, and it took about nine weeks to get the, the full six there, and I think that was a pretty busy time for, we elected reps to, to get, get through our workload, as it was induction and budget and so on. We've now had that time to, to consider, and what we are putting forward here today for the council support officers is to have a total of nine staff there, so four council liaison officers, which we currently have there. At the moment, there are sort of two more junior ones assisting them, and we're looking to include, expand that to another two, as well as a senior policy and communications officer. In the office of the mayor, at the moment, I have three staff, which I have a chief, chief of staff, and a PA, and as well as a policy and communications officer. Certainly only having three there has been a, a real challenge, I know from my staff that just dealing with the high level of correspondence I have is, is, it takes up one and a half FTE, it's been quite a task, and I think the CEO for providing some admin support from other areas and, and yourself too. So I'm not asking any questions, I'll probably let you sit down now, Mr Wilson.
Mayor, thank you, yes, I was going to put out that perhaps Mr Wilson can, can take.
Sorry about that, Mr Wilson.
While he is still there, I'd like to take the opportunity, while you're talking about this, to give a sincere thanks to Mr Wilson for his, his counsel, his, his guidance and his friendship to, to each of us since beginning. You are that safe pair of hands that's helping us navigate the very complex legislative framework that we operate within, and thank you.
Yeah, so coming to the office of the mayor, so we are proposing that there will be a chief of staff who's a council officer, a, a senior policy and communications officer, maintain the personal assistant to the mayor and the policy communications officer, but also an additional diary and correspondence coordinator. The record keeping for, for my office as well as the correspondence and so on has been, I think, quite traumatic for some of the, the team in there, and I really thank them for the, the additional long hours that they've been doing to, to keep on top of that. So that's probably the, the major change in this, in this policy, I'd like to, for further discussion, if anyone would like to make comment.
Mayor, just, you know, further to my comments, specifically in relation to Mr Wilson, you know, outside of Mr Wilson, we are surrounded by support staff who have been amazing, and I think we all recognise that when we came on board, the procedures that had been, and policies that had been put in place fairly recently by, by then administrator, were yet to be tested, and, and as time went by, you know, inevitably, when, when you put new policies and procedures in place, these things need to be tweaked along the way, and the organisation has been very responsive to our needs, so thank you for that, and, and I think with the, with the additional support, we will be well supported going forward.
I think too, the push for us to be, to have, I guess we have our commitments as, as board members like today, as well as working with residents, the, the dual hat that, that we have, being able to have a bit more support here will allow us, I think, to take on that, those, the board, like, and, and, and I guess that, that leadership when it comes to policy development and policy as well, I think it will allow us to do that. Any other discussion? Case, I'll put that amended item B to the vote, knowing that I moved it and councillor Kuncelmann's seconded it, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item C, which is that funding for the senior policy. That funding for the senior policy communication roles, both once, one in the mayor's office and one for council support, be considered for the inclusion during a future budget amendment process. Now that we've created the roles, we need them funded, I will move that, do I have a second for that, thank you councillor Kuncelmann? Any discussion? No, in that case I'll put that motion to the vote, those in favour? Thank you, it's carried, it's unanimous. Thank you, and item D is that the revised policy titled investigations policy as detailed attachment B, be adopted, now I'll, I'll move that, do I have a second of that councillor Kuncelmann? I'll open that up for discussion.
This is paragraph D?
D, so it's item D, yeah.
I do, I do have a query of the officer, please.
Sure, may I ask for the relevant council officer to, about the investigations policy to come forward, please? Thank you, Mr Wilson, councillor Tully, do you have a question?
Yes, it's on page five of eight of the policy, and on page, um, on page five of the policy.
Isn't titled, paragraph nineteen, expenses?
Yeah, paragraph nineteen, correct. Yeah, I just had a query, in relation to, it's the only query I have in relation to this policy, the deletion of these words, any costs incurred by complainants, which could be third parties, why would we be deleting that? Because the provision of having it there makes it clear that we're, we're never going to cover the costs of, of third parties. Or the subject councillors will be, I, I don't understand the reason for the deletion of that.
That's a question that I am not able to answer, I'm probably not the, the relevant officer to be answering that question, that change was proposed by another area of council.
Thank you, Mr Wilson.
Is that person?
I'll ask, CEO, are you able to explain the deletion of that final par, final sentence in paragraph nineteen?
I, look, I, I don't understand why that was removed. I can't provide any light on that situation.
Could I prefer, uh, propose that that, that, you know, unless we have to adopt the rest, well, that's the only change, isn't it, in that report?
Yeah.
Could I, I suggest that that be, um.
That we lay this on the table, do you think?
Lay it on the table for the next meeting, so we could get the advice on that, please. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Tully? My apologies, I'll go back to my page, so I can see, and that was moved by myself and, and seconded by councillor Kuncelmann, I'm happy to lay that matter on the table to come back to us, councillor Kuncelmann is as well, I'll then ask for a vote on those, happy to lay that on the table, please raise your hand. Thank you, that's unanimous, thank you. And now, now move on to item fifteen point two, legislative amendments to council meeting policies. The recommendation here is that there are two, that the revised policy entitled meeting procedures policy is detailed attachment, one be adopted, as, that the revised policy titled meeting conduct policy be detailed attachment to, now, this is another item that we haven't been briefed on as well. May I ask for a mover? Or I'm happy to, I'll move our recommendation A. Do I have a second for councillor, councillor Doyle? Do you want to ask any questions on these? There's no questions, I guess in discussion, I see that I, from what I can see in the paperwork whilst we haven't been briefed on it, the, the addition of a paragraph to make clear of the order of business for a standing committee? Was the main amendment? CEO, would that be your interpretation?
And there's some, and there's some other legal issues relating to legislation, yeah. Mr Wilson, would be able to provide more information if you're required.
I guess I'll put this out to the councils, do you wish to lay this on the table as well and wait to be briefed properly, or would you like to deal with the matter today?
I'm, I'm happy to take as read, mayor.
Take it as read? Any questions?
If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to have.
Any questions of the relevant council officer? No, open up for discussion. Thank you very much, so I'll put the recommendation A to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous, thank you. We're now moving to recommendation B, which is that the revised policy entitled meeting conduct policy as detailed attachment to be adopted, I'm happy to move that, do I have a second, councillor Doyle? Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to ask the relevant council officer any questions? From what I can see, it's a matter of just tidying up things based on the legislation that's come forward as, as per the twelfth of October. If there's no questions, I'll open up for discussion. There being a discussion, I'll put the, uh, recommendation B to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, thank you, it's unanimous. Item fifteen point three, which is looking at the meetings and briefings for, for next year, I think from February onwards, I've sent out an email to, to councils, I think yesterday, late yesterday, because we haven't been briefed on this, but we've also been looking at a more of a holistic way of being a bit more efficient, having a few improvements, and I thank Mr Wilson for, for coming to meet with me a couple of times yesterday. So I'm actually proposing that we lay this matter on the table, so we can actually work out a way that's more, more efficient, and come back, I guess, at the next ordinary council meeting on the tenth of December. Do I have a second for that, councillor Kuncelmann? I'll open that up for discussion.
Just to, um, just to you, mayor, the commentary around not being briefed on some of these things, I am happy to ask questions of the relevant council officer, and, and have read the report, I'm happy to support my fellow councillors in, in, you know, considering this at a, at a further meeting, once more information comes to light, but I don't think that the inference that we haven't been briefed on it means that the council officers aren't doing a good enough job of briefing us on these things, rather, you know, we could be a little bit more proactive in, in that instance as well.
A point taken, most items on the agenda we've been briefed on, it wasn't meant to be a derogatory commentary for council organisation or for council officers, but thank you for that clarification, councillor Fickner. Thank you, councillor Mansell.
Yeah, I'd just add that I've thought that we got a lot of timely information on this, it's purely that the idea came up yesterday that there's no real reason why the growth infrastructure and waste committee has to happen a week prior to the rest of the committees, and having those on the same day would seriously reduce the strain that's placed on the organisation. Placing strain on the organisation is an unfortunate part of our job to scrutinise things that are happening, but at the same time, if we want an efficient and cost effective council, we need to be reasonable about what impact we're having. So it's, for me, the only reason to lay this matter on the table is that, that omniscient idea to, to have all the committees on the same day to improve workflow is, is one that's worthy of consideration, but this particular timetable before us isn't, isn't that option?
Thank you councillor Kuncelmann.
I, I agree, mayor, that if we have this agenda, earlier, rather than just the two days, would be much better.
Yeah, I guess, uh, this, this. Yeah, I guess for, for my point, we received this Friday, Monday night, we're supposed to receive our papers on a Friday, so, you know, it's, we all have things on, I know I certainly have things every night this week, so speaking with Mr Wilson, it was a matter of how can we make this, and I understand by having that, that, the standing committee is on the Thursday, it's a very quick turnaround, it's very difficult for the organisation to turn around having all those committee reports ready by Friday afternoon, so I think it'd be good for us to look at alternative ways, and if we can be more efficient, I think that'd be something that we should consider.
Further to that, I, I thought that was what the weekend was for.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor Mansell.
With all due respect, the, a printout of this calendar, I'm more than certain appeared on my desk a number of weeks ago.
Right. Well, I can say for, for myself, I didn't see it till Monday evening, it was not. Councillor Tully?
Yes, I, I think what's been said is appropriate, that we have the opportunity to consider this in detail, perhaps meeting, all the, all, all of the committees meeting on the Wednesday, might, might provide a better alternative as well for the easy provision of that to councillors, with the reports of each committee in a timely manner. The other issue is that at the start of this term, we were told that because that first committee, growth infrastructure and waste committee, is the only one with complete delegated powers, that it was appropriate to, to meet in a fashion that it could deal with any matters either the week before the others, or at the council meeting, so there wouldn't be more than two weeks, so that, that was really impressed upon us as the difference and the reason, so I'd be, you know, when this is considered a. So I'd be, you know, when, when this is, um, considered again, I'd be interested in with those offices advising, um, if, if they agree with that or why they've changed their mind.
My understanding, uh, Mr Tully, uh, councillor Tully, they're not looking at changing when the growth and infrastructure and waste committee. It may be the fact that we might be having that, a two-week gap between the standing, it will push the standing committee meetings a week earlier, I guess. So there's a two-week gap between, uh, the standing committee and the ordinary. That's one, I think there's, there's a number of options. But I think what's probably clear today is that we probably need to have a discussion about that. So if it's okay, I'd like to lay that on the table. Um, and for us to have that discussion so we can work out an efficient way, um, knowing council.
Probably meetings starting at eight AM if we're going to squeeze them all into, into one day, which is what we've done in the past for that reason.
So, um, I, I did move that we'd lay it on the table and councillor Kunsman, I think, seconded that. May I put that matter to the vote, those in favour? I see it's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next one is fifteen point four, which is the report on the audit and risk management committee of the sixteenth of November twenty twenty. May I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Johnic, and a seconder, thank you councillor Doyle. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? Or would like to, uh, the mover with the second, I'd like to. Any questions? No, I guess for a discussion, I, I just note that QAI will be conducting the, um, the audit of the, um, Cherish Environment Foundation, which I think is a good thing. If there's no further discussion, I'll move that report as per the recommendation. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. We now want, move on to fifteen point five. Which is the quarter one operational plan twenty 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 one quarterly performance report. Recommend that the report be received and the contents noted. May I ask for a mover please? Thank you councillor Doyle, and a seconder, thank you councillor Johnic. Does anyone wish to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this report? Take it as. Any discussion? No, I think we're taking it as, as read and note the areas that are, um, completed, that are in progress, at, at risk or have stopped. Thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next, move on to fifteen point six, the monthly finance performance report. The recommendation is that the report on the council's financial performance for the period ending the thirty first of October twenty twenty, submitted in accordance, uh, with the local government act, be considered and noted by council. May I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Johnic, and a seconder, thank you councillor Kunsman. Would anyone like to discuss this with the relevant, may I ask for the relevant council officer to come down please? Is it your name and your title?
Good morning, Mayor Harding, and councillors, Jeff Keats, Chief Financial Officer. Would you like me to scroll on a little, or just some questions?
I think just some questions, that's okay. So, what are the high, highest risk areas that we should be aware of?
Sure. I guess there's a couple of key variances to note there which we were continuing to track through. One is positive that revenue is, is in front, particularly in relation to fees and charges at the moment. And that's one which we've spoken about before, particularly when we had some COVID impact, uh, phased in the first six months. So that's one that we'll be keeping a close eye on as we go into the, the early part of the new year, and does that, does that trend continue? Um, the other area is in relation to, um, our employee expenses, which we've raised before. That's, uh, now starting to trend very close to budget. Um, that's sort of been in line with our forecast that we've spoken to, to council about over the last period of time. Um, some of that's arising because we have the built-in vacancy rate within our budget and also some, some increasing in leaves. Uh, we might see a trend down a little bit over Christmas, New Year, as leave's taken. And the executive team's continuing to look at vacancies and staffing in that point. So that's one area which, um, is close to budget. One which the, the executive is keeping, uh, monitoring on. And obviously, um, within materials and services. Uh, the underspend there is another area that we'll keep a track on. We've got a lot of comments coming back. It's timing, we want to better understand that. As we get into the, the next part, is that timing or is there underspends which council can look to reallocate, et cetera, in that space? And certainly as we discuss a budget amendment over the next couple of weeks, we would look to, um, fund some of those through some of those unidentified savings in that area as we move forward. The other area is obviously the capital projects, um, noting that, and we've discussed that part of the growth and infrastructure committee as well in a little bit more detail. Noting that where we sit at the moment, we're a little bit behind budget. We're in line in the IED budgeting on with forecasts, but it is below budget at the moment. And there's a pressure on the spend rate in the first six months and next year to, to achieve that target. At the moment, it's forecast to be slightly below, um, the budgeted spend at the moment. So they're sort of the key risks that I'd highlight at the moment for the, for the council.
Does that mean we may not be delivering on all our capital works programme?
Um, I think it's more, we're happy to speak to that in, in some more detail with the committees. Some of it will be slippage into future years. Um, and some maybe around, there is some allocation of funds there that, uh, wasn't for specific projects, which is now not required. So for an example, as that is with the COVID stimulus, there was a couple of million dollars. We didn't identify projects at that stage. One was just unallocated a million. They're identifying that there was specific projects, so that's not sort of required funding. So some of that is the reason why it's coming backwards from there. Um, but a lot of it is to do with timing of projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Keats. Any other questions? No, thank you very much for talking. Thank you. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put the, the, um, recommendation to the floor. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now go to fifteen point seven, which is the Queensland Audit Office Final Management Report for two thousand and nineteen twenty. The recommendation is that the twen- nineteen twenty final management report for Ipswich City Council as detailed attachment one be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover for that? Thank you councillor Fickner, and a seconder, thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion or questions? No, I, I just note the fact that there is substantial, uh, when you look at appendix, I think it's actually two A, looking at, um, addressing some of those, um, um, significant deficiencies and how, um, note the progress, uh, and improvement in those areas. So thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's passed, it's unanimous. We now go to fifteen point eight. Which is the sub-regional waste alliance, expression of interest for resource recovery and or waste disposal services.
Just through you, mayor, I'd just like to note that, um, I previously, um, declared a prescribed conflict of interest. But I will be, um, endeavoring to get some future advice legally in relation to that.
That'll be fantastic. Thank you councillor Johnic. This is somewhat a lengthy recommendation, I think a very vital and important one. Um, this report is concerning the sub-regional waste alliance, expression of interest, which is between us and a number of councillors, councils, my apologies. This is some work that commenced under the interim administrator involving ourselves, Logan City Council, Redland City Council, Lockyer Valley Regional Council and Somerset Regional Council. And before we go on to the recommendations, I'd just like to make an opening comment that there's two sides to the waste coin. Uh, we've been aggressively working on one side as a council. I think we've been, we have a strategy. We're ensuring that we have a strategy in place to lift waste and re- the resource recovery industry performance in our city. The other side is that we must responsibly dispose of our residents' household waste, as well as the construction and commercial waste we generate as council. And this requires waste infrastructure. Now, Ipswich households produce around sixty thousand tonnes of municipal solid waste each year. We're the fastest growing city in Queensland, and in the next twenty years, another three hundred and thirty-six residents will call our city home. That's more than doubling our population. Uh, we now know that we don't have the infrastructure planned or funded to meet the current growth or the long-term need. And that includes our waste infrastructure. And we have a responsibility to our current and future residents to provide reliable waste services. We also have a responsibility to move with the times and minimise waste to landfill and maximise the recycling so we can improve environmental, social and economic outcomes. We also need to leverage our unique position and partner with other councils in this, in this group here to strengthen buying power and demand better outcomes for the, from the private sector. Uh, that is what this E O Y process is, is, will do. It will facilitate and deliver for us. The options for the waste solutions to support our growing demand and demand the dis- the disposal, and to manage the demand from disposal of household waste. Now, note that the recommendation A is looking at, I think, three different options. Which we've gone through. So I'll move that, uh, recommendation A. To make things easier, I'll, I'll say option one, so we can lead off into a discussion. Would anyone else like to, who would like to second?
Um, just point of order, mayor, before we go into a recommendation, it might be worthwhile to have the relevant council officer, um.
Oh, I, yeah.
Speak to.
Before we go into different options?
Before we choose an option.
I was doing, I, I will call the relevant council, but best please know that once, because we haven't moved it, um, that we can't go into discussion. So you need to stick to questions when we have the council officer here. So just, that's why I thought if I moved it seconded, we can sort of go into discussion if need be. So I'll call.
Well, just a point of order on that. I, I think that's, uh, appropriate to, to have the motion before us to have a, a little bit broad-ranging sort of discussion and questions. Be- because then we could still opt for a different option, you know, as the final, final thing. So I'd, I'd prefer to have that motion before us. Invite the officer and then from the discussion, decide i- if that remains the correct option.
For recommendation A, I'll move for, for option one, and I'll take it that you'll second that, councillor Tully? Uh, just for the sake of getting the conversation started. Thank you. Now I'll ask for the relevant council officer to come forward. Know that when we do go into discussion, we can change that option.
Morning, mayor and councillors, Charlie Dill.
Thank you.
General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Yes, Mr Dill, um, how does our participation in this process align with our own planning for the Ipswich Waste Services?
Uh, so by participating in this, it allows, uh, council to, um, to have solutions of its own, uh, in managing, uh, the local government areas, uh, waste. Um, that enables us to, uh, create the potential for higher levels of value in terms of, um, commercial rates, the disposal of waste, and also higher, um, environmental values and sustainability values as well, because some of the solutions offered, um, in aggregate, um, make it more feasible for, for higher technology or greater technology, uh, and better solutions.
Are there other questions of? Mr Dill? I guess, Mr Dill, are there, um, what are the, the economic and I guess the financial benefits of the council remaining as part of this sub-regional alliance? E O Y?
As I indicated, um, in my previous response, um, with combining all of the materials together, it allows the industry to present options to us, which, um, may be viable with that level of volume. Um, but not as an individual, uh, um, solution just for Ipswich City Council. So the, I guess the commercial rates that may be presented at the end of this process, uh, are yet to be determined. Uh, but as envisaged that due to the, um, uh, economy of scale, that we will see financial benefits. But also, as I said, the non, non-price, uh, benefits as well.
Okay, thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Um, Mr Dill, is it correct that there really is no downside in proceeding to the next stage with this? We're not committing council to anything, we're just doing further exploratory investigations.
Um, thank you, deputy mayor. The, I guess the only, uh, downside, if, if you might call it that, is the expense of participating. Uh, and in the recommendations, you'll see if, uh, option, if, uh, option one, uh, in recommendation A is chosen, there is a, a budgetary requirement. Uh, beyond that, I don't believe from a practical sense, there is any disadvantage, uh, that I can, uh, identify or my officers can identify in proceeding with this process. I would just like to, uh, clarify, um, to the floor here, uh, that moving forward, if option one was to be chosen, um, the, I, I would like to, to draw your attention to the confidential attachment and the section which out, outlines the next steps. Um, so the next steps, uh, there are four, and that is, uh, one is to establish a new heads of agreement, which will outline the governance model and framework. Um, the second step is to identify and agree on the operating parameters. Uh, and they would be things such as what the individual councillors would be willing to accept in terms of, um, the conditions moving forward. The third step is to undertake the E T I, which is the early tender involvement process. Uh, and then following the outcome of that, um, we would then enter into a request for tender. So the, the, the early tender involvement is where solutions are put on the table. Uh, and, uh, then the prices are sought through the request for tender process. The point I want to make is that, um, prior to, to going to the early tender involvement, council would be required to make a decision and a resolution whether to proceed to that step. Uh, and then again, council would be required to make a resolution to proceed to the request for tender stage. And it is clearly outlined in the confidential attachment that council can withdraw from participation at any stage.
Thank you, Mr Dill, for clarifying that. That was my interpretation.
Just got a, uh, I was just taking it off the screen. If we could just tab down a little bit on what option one, please.
Is it a question for Mr Dill?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, it's about the, um, uh. Oh, yeah, there we are, paragraph two. So under paragraph two, we have, would have two delegates on that steering group, plus the CEO.
The part that says the mayor and chairperson, or their councillor delegate represents.
Chair, which, which chairperson, who, who, chairperson of what? Of a particular committee?
So, I'll just try and load up my screen here. So in two, is it, sorry?
Yes, the mayor and chairperson, that's the first question, that, um, that which chairperson, and number two.
So, sorry councillor.
Yeah, uh, number two, uh, just to confirm that we've got two delegates plus the CEO on that, um, group. Or would have.
So the first part of, um, the item two, uh, is the chairperson of the, um, relevant committee, I believe. Uh, which would be the, uh, growth infrastructure and waste committee.
Well, perhaps we should put that in.
One in the person.
Um, which is one of the same thing.
So probably should.
Um. Or their council, uh, councillor delegate.
Yes, yes.
Um, what was the second one?
Just to confirm that under paragraph two, we've got two delegates, and under the next paragraph, we've got the CEO as well on that group. That's the way it reads to me.
Yes, that is, that's my understanding as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr Dill?
Well. So you are the chairperson of that committee?
Yes.
So you'd have to know that in a second.
We'll have to, when we go into discussion, if we could. Any other questions, Mr Dill?
No.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr Dill. CEO, we've probably got a couple of questions for you, if that's. I think, um, did you want to ask a question, Mr Tully, of, of?
No.
This particular one?
No, no, no.
I'm quite open to, whether it's G O W or the Chair of Environment and Sustainability or, or someone else who's interested.
Oh, perhaps I could suggest the Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Committee, uh, be the, uh, second delegate.
Yep. So. Well, well, you and I moved and, and seconded this, so I think we're both comfortable with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, CEO, may I ask, what do you think the risks are if we don't proceed? Obviously, we're looking at four, forty different options.
If we don't proceed.
Yes, if we don't. Oh, oh, shall we go, if, if we don't proceed?
If we, risks, risks if we don't proceed.
Point of order.
Yes.
So we're, we're discussing option number one, which is that we will proceed in. So we're, we're discussing option number one, which is that we will proceed in, in its entirety, and that's, and that's the substantive motion that's been, that's been put forward.
At this stage, it hasn't been identified, th- there is a, the second paragraph of point one needs to identify which of the solutions you're looking to take, and I don't know whether that's been made.
No, I think at the moment, we're just, I'm, I'm just in the question phase, uh, we haven't decided which option, I, we'll go through each option.
Which solution?
I just, I would just like to find out from, I guess, I've probably dropped to the option four, but what happens if we don't proceed, C E O?
It, well, it, it means that we've, uh, our expenditure and our time to date is lost, our, um, in some ways, you know, perhaps some of our relationship with the other parties, and because of, some of the major solutions here require the involvement of ourselves, Logan and Redlands in them, and so our lack of involvement in the process may, at any point, and nor, and same with them, if all three of us don't go to, I guess, down the aisle together, then we won't be able to proceed through this process. Um, there is a, there is a cost in going forward. The, the, um, and obviously, there are, there are risks, um, as we proceed forward, as, as you get closer to the, the final step, because you'd be committing a significant, uh, amount of money ultimately, um, if you took this in forward, in terms of a solution. But in terms of real risks to take the next step, there aren't, aren't really major risks in taking this step forward, apart from the fact that you're, you're committing that you're interested in, in those solutions, specific solutions that we're, we're.
I'd like to open up a discussion about which option we should be looking at, knowing we've, we've placed option one, and there are four options there. I think councillor Fekner, would you like to speak to some of those options?
Can I just see what the original recommendation is? Thanks, Ricky, that we're actually discussing here. Did we make mention of the particular?
So that councillors, that councillors ought to adopt one or more of the presented options?
We, A, and then, but we haven't specified which particular option yet.
Correct, so I think now a few people would like to discuss the, the four options that have been presented to us.
Uh, yeah, I would just like to say that I am completely in support of option number one. Um, I guess I have a question through you, Mayor, to councillor Milligan, the Chair of the Environment Committee, um, if he's, if he is happy to, um, take on that role, and I would like to put forward, um, my own personal interest in, in being on that, um, in being in that particular role, um, and to see if councillor Milligan was particularly wedded, um, to that as the, as the Chair of the, um, Environment and Sustainability Committee. This is something that I'm quite passionate about, and, uh, and, and would probably like to, um, to just let the, the group know that I would like to be a, a part of that conversation that happens moving forward.
Uh, Mayor, if I, uh, may I respond?
Yes, please.
With regard to, uh, item, uh, sub item two, being a mayor and chairperson, or their councillor delegate or delegates, um, that, uh, I think it would, uh, be within the realms of that, uh, for councillor Fekner to be, uh, in, included.
Well, should we have councillor Fekner as the alternate delegate?
Would it, uh, be not possible to be also included?
Let me just look at, let me just look at section fifteen of the confidential report.
It's not explicit in fifteen, it says mayor and councillors. It's, uh, I, I, I just read it while that debate was on, so it's not explicit, I guess we could always ask if we wanted to have three councillors there.
Yep.
Um, to the parties, and if they say no, then you, you'll have to, uh, you'll have to make a decision, have you seen?
I don't think they will, but. So we'd like, so I think, are you putting forward an amendment, councillor Fekner, that, um, that in recommendation A two? That the Chair and the Deputy Chair?
A, option one, subsection two, yes?
Yes, that the Chair and Deputy Chair of the Environment and Sustainability?
Yep, that sounds good.
Would that be, I'm comfortable with that, are you councillor Tully?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you.
I'm just, just to you, Mayor, sorry, I'm, uh, just the fact that we're currently, um, discussing a motion that's not substantive, um, and, sorry to bring it back to exactly what we're discussing here, recommendation that council resolved to adopt, well, that's, by us moving that, that, that is not a substantive motion that we're currently discussing, because, because that council resolved to adopt one or more of the options, a substantive, um, motion would be that we would, were to pick one of these options and then discuss them.
Yep, so as a fact, now, um, I move that option one be considered, and councillor Tully, uh, did number two, number one is, seconded that, so that's what we're discussing, but I guess now in the discussion phase, we, we, we both were very upfront with the fact that we said, that we put forward option one.
So you chose option one, but that's not, that's not explicit in the, in the recommenda, in the recommendation.
Okay, well.
Yeah, but it is in the moved recommendation, yes.
It is in the moved recommendation that we, that we did, but now I do wish to open it up for people to have a discussion, it was pretty explicit that we moved that in order to question the relevant council officers, and so we could have an open discussion about the four different options.
So, thank you, that clears that up, um, and I guess, you know, in discussion, um, why, uh, why we would move that and then ask the C E O if that was the right decision, um, that's, that's questionable to me. If you're moving option one and then asking him if that was the right decision to make, well, is, you've decided that you were to move option one based on what reasons?
I guess I wanted to highlight, much as I asked the C F O, um, what are the risks? So what, what are the risks if we don't do it? Uh, that's, that's, I think, a good question.
So I guess, yeah, the question was, you know, we have selected option one, are there any risks associated with that, rather than trying to compare the options when you've clearly selected one to talk about? That's the only issue I have with moving it before questioning the relevant council officers before moving something substantive.
Well, as I say, councillor Fekner is, is the Chair, I've, I've made a decision that we're going to move for, for option one, and councillor Tully has seconded that, um, I'll be pretty upfront that we've done that to move things along, and I think there's not an issue with that, I understand that you have a different point of view, um, and I think now, you know, in, in discussion time, I'm usually pretty free and open, I, um, allow people to have multiple discussion points, um, during the meeting, I think that's really important for us, especially something as important as this complex issue of, of waste that we have here. So if we can just move on from that, I think the question I asked was very, was relevant and reasonable. Now, would I like to discuss other options? Because I think to have a discussion about option one, we do have discussion two, two or three and four, if people would like to have their views heard.
I don't believe anyone has proposed a foreshadowed motion to choose one of the other options, but speaking in favour of option number one, um, that we're discussing now, I'm, yeah, as I said, I'm completely in support, um, of carrying this forward, uh, as Mr. Farmer said, we carry reputational risk, um, we have made a commitment that's quite longstanding and before our time to other local government areas. Um, I think to pick up on, and to contextualise some of the data that you mentioned earlier in your opening to this particular item, that, um, you were responsible for, for our own waste, um, and that we are unable to, um, deliver with future projections for growth, um, uh, it, it might be nice, uh, to, to, for the record, um, include the fact that, um, the red bin waste that we collect from our residents and will continue to collect from our residents, still is a small portion of the waste that comes into our local government area, um, so in terms of, uh, not being sustainable, um, you know, in, in its current form, our, our present waste options that we have, it's not necessarily the strain of the red bin, um, as, as mentioned ear- earlier, or, or the inference of that, I think that, um, there's a broader discussion around, we're accepting a hell of a lot of waste into our local government area, um, and for the record, um, it's, it's a very small portion of our own red bin waste that is the strain, um, on, on our waste industry here in Ipswich, so moving that conversation forward and, and clearing that up, um, it is very worthwhile for us to consider options in conjunction with other L G As, um, so, yeah, I, I couldn't be in any more support of this item, it, it means that it gives us, um, I guess, it, it, it gives us opportunities for not only economic development, but to help us understand the waste issue a little bit better, better, and have the backing of other local government areas, and to make a commitment to them and for them to make a commitment to us as well.
Well, so, thank you very much, councillor Fekner. There's other discussion? Yes, councillor Mason?
I think option one is the prudent decision, because it's, it's well recognised across Queensland that more landfill needs to be diverted through recycling streams, um, and we're part of that journey for the entire state. These issues are often framed in a bit of a dichotomy, they split off into economic impacts and the environment and health and safety of residents. I think proceeding forward, the costs involved as going into the next step of this process are really quite affordable when you look at the extra information we'll receive on costings for potential solutions, but also extra technical information on those possible impacts on our environment and residents, um, and having more information will let us hold those two things into balance, and in the context of long-term solutions being sought here, we need as much information we can get on those two things, and option one is the path forward for that.
Thank you, councillor Mason. There being no other discussion, I put forward the recommendation that was being.
We need to clarify that if you look at the motion as it is, it says, do you select solution one and/or two and/or three? So, uh, is the suggestion that it is option one, including solution one, two and three? Is that correct?
That was the assumption.
That's, that's correct.
But it's not, it's not, if you look at the, the motion for you, it needs to say one, two and three, if that is what you are intending to do, I think that's what I'm hearing, but it's not what's.
Unrelated report.
Yes, okay, so councillor Tully and I is moving and seconding this?
Yeah, to adopt.
Adopt solutions.
Solution.
One.
With, what do you call the other big elements?
Solutions one, two and three. Solutions one, two and three.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Including option one, keep on going. See, talk, oh, you just, see, early tender, solution one and/or selection two and/or, so it should be solution one and solution two and solution three.
Yeah, so, so one, two and three, so we're keeping all options open.
Yes. Clear it, no?
Exactly what that says there.
No, you're just getting, you're getting rid of the ors.
One, two and three.
Getting rid of the ors.
Solutions one, two and three.
Mayor, if I may, yeah, if, if we just remove the ors, I think. Yeah, just need to get, remove the ors.
Yeah.
So the council resolved to adopt solution one, two and three?
Yeah.
Of the presented options?
Yeah.
And obviously, we've discussed sub point two. And I'll take the rest as read. There being no other discussion, may I put that to the vote? Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, that is unanimous. We'll now move on to the next item, so we'll wait for councillor Johnick, if councillor Johnick could be notified that we're on to the next item. And while we wait, I'll just make the note, I guess, while we wait for councillor Johnick, that, um, that, um, this recommendation does not commit us to a solution, but does commit us to a, as asked for, to be an ongoing participant in the process and allows us to explore options, and I'm looking forward to collaborating with other, um, local governments in a solution.
Excuse me, Mayor, is that the completion of item number fifteen point eight?
Yep.
Did you and councillor Tully move A, option one, and B and C in the recommendation?
Oh.
Or was it just?
It was option one with the stated, um.
So that was only recommendation A, that we need recommendation B and C to, to be discussed and voted on?
You are correct, I apologise councillor Johnick, that's my oversight, thank you very much, councillor Fekner. Sorry. Thank you.
Should be quick.
Very, very important that we do those Bs and Cs. Thank you, councillor Fekner. I hope that councillor Johnick has left. Um, I'll move that, um, um, B and C are moved together, uh, that the C E O, um, immediately notify the, the C E O of Logan City as the lead procurement councillor for the E O Y, um, and that, um, that the required budget as listed in item C is also approved, so I'll leave that, do I have a second?
Oh, second, there is, Mayor.
Any discussion?
No.
No, that case I've, I, I put that to the vote, those in favour? Thank you very much, it's passed and you know who knows, thank you very much, councillor Fekner. Uh, I'll ask councillor Johnick again to come back. My apologies, councillor Johnick, I think we've all through one-third of those motions. We now move on to item fifteen point nine, which is the advisory panel for the C E O's, um, annual performance appraisal. Uh, I note the, there's a recommendation there, and I'd like to move that council resolve that councillor Doyle and councillor Fekner be appointed to assist the mayor, who will chair the advisory panel for the C E O's annual performance appraisal. Do I have a second, uh, for that, councillor Fekner? Thank you very much. Any discussion on this? No, thank you, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. I see that's unanimous. We'll move on to the last point, the last item, which is sixteen point one, which is a notice of motion of footpath, and I notice that councillor Fekner is leaving the room. I'll just wait.
Will you require my re-entry for the conclusion of the meeting there?
Just check with the C E O, not that I know of. No?
I don't see.
Farewell, councillor Fekner, who, who will make sure I do all four, all four items?
I might just leave myself.
I'm willing to take out.
You're willing, thank you, uh, thank you. Thank you, sixteen point one, which is a notice of motion for footpath dining, I'll leave it over to you, councillor Johnick, to, to move that.
Yeah, I'll move that. Um, do I need a second, uh?
What do you wish to?
It's basically just, um, an emotion of encouragement, really, um, for footpath dining, um, in our city, so I understand and acknowledge that we did pass, um, discount provisions of twenty-five percent, um, but I feel that this is necessary, um, to continue and expand operations within the C B D redevelopment, and also for social distancing purposes. Um, I would like to just make an amendment by adding two words to A.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that council consider waiving its scheduled footpath dining licence fees for the two thousand and twenty to twenty-one financial year for, and then add all current,
Mm-hmm, thank you.
new and additional footpath. So all current, new and additional, so just all current should be added, thank you.
So is that an existing?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Good, just a point of order, uh, uh, Mayor, um, if we want to make that decision now, we would say, use the words, waive, waive those fees, because consider waiving means we're going to make a future decision to do it.
I think, um, and I guess I'm up to you, you're, you're moving this, councillor, whether we look for a report to come back to us?
That's correct.
So we're aware of the cost implications?
Oh, well, that's fine.
Yeah.
If. It's a consideration for the waiver through the Chair.
So this is, yeah, so this is not to, to waive the fees, this is to, we have an, uh, an intent to consider the waiving of the fees, and a report will come back in January, by January, at which council will make a decision, is that the intention?
That's the intention, yeah.
Would it be more eloquent to remove motion A and put that more in the, in the body of the, to, so you just go to B, C and D, because? I'll leave that there.
Doesn't seem necessary.
Okay.
It's me, anyway, it's my five cents.
I guess we're, we're considering it.
Yep. So if I could add those two words into A and then move them all together?
Move, um, A, B, C and D together?
Together, combined?
So do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle? Thank you, do you wish to have, call the relevant council officer?
I, I don't see the need, no, but.
Open up for discussion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I think we're about eight C B D businesses who currently have footpath dining, so I think, I applaud the initiative, and if there's any other discussion?
Mayor, yes, um, you know, um, I think, um, discussion will be had once we receive the report and get those final numbers, um, I don't think there are a significant number.
I don't think there are a significant number of businesses, and it's probably not a significant cost to council. And I do note, we've become aware of other councils, for instance, N U S A, who have implemented this in response to their, their COVID response for small businesses. So I applaud councillor Johnic for progressing.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? Yes, sorry, councillor Milligan?
Mayor, just with respect to item D, which states that the report be presented the next relevant meeting of council no later than January twenty twenty one. So that's, that's not intending the December meeting, that's intending that it will be by.
December or the, or the twen, is it twenty sixth of January or something?
Yeah, it's, it's late in January.
Yeah, just through the Chair, just giving the.
Yep. Actually, I wouldn't mind saying, could that come to the economic and industry development?
I don't think we're running committees in January.
Okay, so we'll come, that's why it's written this way. So we'll come back to you. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. There's the last item.
Mayor, is it appropriate this time to table a notice of motion under this heading for the next meeting?
Well, I think there's another process for that. I'll just check with the C E O.
There is a process, but.
Sorry, in the past, unless it's changed, you table it under this heading.
We've got a meeting procedure policy right here in our paperwork.
Let me have a look at the contents.
Let me just check. There's questions on notice. It says notice of motion, doesn't say how to do it.
There's obviously notices or, which are being considered today, but what I'm asking is under this heading, is this where, the time of the meeting when I am I able to table a notice of?
I guess the process is that you table a motion, a notice of motion, so that way we all get to consider it, because we don't have councillor Feckner here either. So there is a process here to table.
I think the intention is, you want to put it on the agenda?
For the next sort of.
For the next meeting, not to be considered today.
Okay, okay.
Am I able to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Okay. This is a notice of motion for consideration at the meeting on the tenth of December two thousand and twenty, that in the interests of transparency and accountability and to provide a safe, healthy and productive workplace, that is focused on eliminating risks associated with the adverse effects of alcohol and other drugs in the workplace, council implement regular and random drug and alcohol testing for all councillors with effect from one February two thousand and twenty one.
No, it doesn't have to be seconded or passed, this is a.
No, no, just go on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's tabled.
Thank you. There been no other tabling of notice of motion? Thank you. I'll call an end to the meeting, and it's twelve oh three. Thank you very much.